All set, thank you. Where is it, sorry. Okay, I would like to call to order this Facility and Technology Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 12th at 5:30 PM, actually 5:35 PM. Making an amendment, actually we'll do that, go ahead and do roll call, Ellen, sorry. The date is incorrect on the agenda, so we'll have to modify that before we approve the agenda. 12, yeah.
Okay, we're calling the committee's here. Jeff is remote and...
Glenn's in route.
Glenn's in route. Traffic.
Okay.
And we also have our teacher rep and our administration rep.
Perfect.
1579, I'm sorry, sorry.
All right, item three, pending the change to the date to reflect November 12th. Do we have an approval of the agenda to reflect that change?
So him.
Okay, the volume is great. This is really good, Josh, whatever you guys did, nice job. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And item four, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from last month? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public participation, did anyone sign up? Ellen? No? Okay. So, item six, discussion next steps, we'll move right into Facilities and the TMS roof. Dean, I'm assuming that's you.
Turn your mic on, Dean.
I can't hear.
Hello, come in.
There you go, perfect.
Okay, we'll start with TMS roof update. The paperwork is on our lawyer's hands right now, waiting for some finalization on that. So, we should know tomorrow, I'm guessing, we should have a meeting tomorrow and get a little bit more information, but right now, really no, no news on that going forward.
No changes, I don't think they can hear you, Dean, if you could pull the mic a little bit closer and just...
Okay.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, so TMS roof, we are awaiting a meeting with our lawyers and Gail associates, just to go over some final details on moving forward. So, we'll hopefully get that meeting tomorrow or the day after, I know that it got delayed one day, so that's where we stand on that. Second item on our facilities is solar update. We have Adam Teff from Titan here, just to give a presentation and to answer any questions. This is the second time he presented, so we asked him to kind of go back and look at some of the numbers, and he's here today to tell us his findings.
Echoing, there we go, okay. So, appreciate everybody having me back, trying to get a sense of, I see some familiar faces and then maybe some, some new folks, I don't know if there was turnover with the elections. I'm happy to give as much of an overview, given that this is technically a part two.
That's not necessary, you don't have to go back.
Okay, all right, great. So, my instruction from last time when we met was to go back to the vendor that had the lowest bid for the project. And I could just confirm a few things, one, the racking type, and also to see if we could close the gap, get a best and final on the larger system size. So, I'm happy to report that, you know, we did get access to all the drawings that we needed, and it would be a ballasted system. I know that was something important that we talked about before, so no roof penetrations, the only exception being the one area of the roof, I believe it's, it's the circular portion that's slanted, that would have to be ballasted, just because there is a tilt. But otherwise, all the flat surfaces will be ballasted. And Greenskies was able to reduce their PPA rate on the larger system size to help get it under nine cents. And we reran the savings calculations, which over a 20-year period, based on the conservative number that we put together, and this is something that I'll circle back to, because it did come up the last time when we talked about this. The gentleman who's actually on the screen had raised it, and so I did rerun some savings calc's with, using the conservative baseline number that we talked about before, and then also one that has a little bit more potential upside for the, for the town and for the school. So, the increase in savings over the contract term was about $60,000. And the two prices are, you know, pretty close, but the larger system size now does create the most value for the school. And, you know, I did run a 20-year look on the larger system size using the baseline ever-source cost that includes some of the cost components that I had left out before. Again, this was something that I just wanted to do based on the conversations that we'd had the last time around about, you know, anticipated savings and, you know, what the district could realistically expect. As a refresher for everybody, my initial analysis, which is what's featured here on this page, the ever-source cost per kilowatt hour is, you know, the absolute bare minimum addressable cost, that if you create a kilowatt hour with solar, you'll subtract a kilowatt hour of that value from your utility bill. And then I did run an analysis where demand charges were accounted for about 25%, like during the summer. So, that's something that is kind of supplemental to this information that we could go over in more detail if that's helpful for everybody, but I think, you know, the main takeaways for me were get a best and final, have Greenskies take a look at the drawings to confirm some assumptions that were important, and then come back and give you my, my assessment of things. So, in this slide here, I know everybody has a paper copy, I'm not sure if you're putting it up, but on the Greenskies results tab, I just, I wanted to spell out the original responses that we got, and then the revised response, so folks could see what the numbers look like. And, of course, happy to take any questions if anybody wants a refresher on what this information means or how to read it. And from a conservative basis, the bottom line for the district is about $48,000 a year in savings, with the larger system, we're about 1.3 million over the useful life. If you flip to the next page, that is the 20-year look that I mentioned, where we included what's probably more of a realistic savings number, but is higher than the base case that I offered, and that's about 66, 67,000 in year one. If you extrapolate that out over a 20-year period, it's about 1.7 million, so you can see those small differences really matter over time. Again, the reason I like to use the most conservative analysis as a baseline is, again, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're setting expectations reasonably, and if we overperform, you know, the system overperforms, creates more savings than we anticipate, then that's good news, but not necessarily expected. I also just, for reference, re-included the layouts for both options. You can see the only difference is just that circular section of the roof would have panels in the smaller design, and then in the larger design, that would have panels on.
Just want to pause you there for a second, Mr. Putnam, you had a question?
Yeah, can we put these numbers up on the screen, sure, I don't have a digital version of that packet, or somebody could send it to me, so I can't see the revised numbers.
Josh, you have that ability?
That, well, there's that page, that's the revised number, so that'd be a good place to start for someone who hasn't seen this yet. So, for, and Jeff, for your benefit, actually, I did put together an ever-source bill analysis that shows the methodology behind our calculations for the conservative case and the optimistic case, so we could go through that if you'd like. But this page that you're looking at here, my goal was just to put a side-by-side of the original response with the updated response to show the, you know, the difference in savings over time, which on the larger project is about, you know, a few thousand dollars a year, and then over the course of 20 years, assuming a conservative performance of the system's about $60,000.
That was even my question, this is a conservative, and this is the conservative analysis without any of the demand-based things we were talking about last time.
Exactly, and then if, if you were to flip to the next slide, that is the 20-year look with the more, you know, the more optimistic, including demand charges. And one thing I would note too, and we can get as granular with this as you'd like, a lot of times people, they don't necessarily understand the utility bill enough to dive too deep into this topic, but I can walk you through how I've, you know, how I calculated this. But basically, what I did was I took demand charges and accounted for about 25% of those, so still a fairly conservative look. I mean, I'm basically just assuming you get demand charge reduction during the summer months, and, you know, leaving out spring, fall, and winter, I think realistically, you still will see some benefit even above and beyond this for those months. But really what it equates to is, you know, you add an additional two cents to your addressable kilowatt hour, your ever-source kilowatt hour column, and, you know, it helps extract another, you know, $18,000 a year in savings out of it. So, I would view this as the, a potential savings, and then the lower number would be your base case conservative number.
Great, thank you.
Sure, and I think, you know, we're still, we keep the same methodology with, you know, the panel degradation about half a percent a year, and then the assumptions related to ever-source's costs, we have 1.5% escalator applied. Generally speaking, your transmission distribution ever-source's costs are, you know, will rise more than that, but, you know, your supply price is a market-based price, and, you know, it can be difficult to account for that. So, we try to just use your current, your current utility bill as a reference point, and then over time, make what I think are some pretty modest assumptions about where the future of electricity prices are going. Though most metrics, I think, would tell you it's going up, but obviously, I can't, can't guarantee that, so. And if this is of interest, I think, admittedly, Jeff, I'm looking at the TV like you're here, I'm looking at everybody else. That slide is for you, basically, but, you know, I can walk everybody through it if that's helpful. If you wouldn't mind flipping a few, yeah, those are just the layouts. Okay, so I included this in the presentation as a reference point for anybody that wanted to go deeper into the utility bill. And, you know, color coding is kind of the way to go, I think, so I highlighted all of the charges in light blue that represent that base case scenario. So, you create a kilowatt hour with solar, you're going to subtract a kilowatt hour from those charges, no questions asked, time of day, doesn't matter. You add all those up, divided by the number of kilowatt hours used, it comes out to, you know, about 14.14 cents. So, if you reference back to the original slide, you'll see the addressable ever-source cost is .1414. If you bring the demand charges back into the equation, those are the ones in purple, those are about another seven cents per kilowatt hour, but then I account for just 25% of those, so you add another two cents in for the, for the potential addressable cost, and that's where you get that difference. So, again, trying to kind of meet, you know, meet everyone in the middle of, give you a low side, give you a high side analysis of what you could expect, walk you through the rationale. Again, still trying to lean on the conservative side by only accounting for 25% of those demand charges, because as, you know, as folks know, it's wintertime, your production's going to be low, late winter, you know, same thing, so. But generally, this is what we see play out for folks.
This, this is a good representation of, for the rest of what would likely happen, obviously, there's no guarantee, but with a 25% delta here for the demand charge, I don't think this is going to be too far off from what really happens.
Yeah, but again, I think having, this is from the June 2025 utility bill for the school, so it's, you know, I'm trying to use live data, recent data, nothing substantial has changed between now and June, so all these costs are still the same. So, I think it's, you know, it's a good representation, representation, and a good reference point, just to keep in the slide deck for future, future reference. And then the, the final page really of, I think, importance here is just kind of a general timeline for action, and this is if the district wanted to have the project built in the summertime. So, the process for moving from where we are to the construction, there is a power purchase agreement, that's the master document between Greenskies and Torrenton Public Schools. In that document, and as a refresher for folks, the way this would be structured is Greenskies would own, operate, maintain the equipment, you buy the power at a fixed price for a 20-year period. So, within that contract, obviously, that's where all the, the nuts and bolts of how that works are ironed out, that's, you know, these contracts have been around for about 15 years at this point, so they're pretty well negotiated with attorneys, but I always recommend that, I'm sure that the town has a, a town attorney, either in-house or external. And he or she should really be responsible for going through that contract, I can advise, but I'm not an attorney, so. Contractually, that's really the next step, and, and once that's in place, that would then enable Greenskies to start the engineering, the procurement, applying into the incentive program for, from ever-source, and try to get the ball rolling for, for a summertime install. So, it's that legal step, other than just, you know, approvals from various committees and things like that, if, if those are obtained, then it would move to contract review phase. So, that was my presentation, I'm happy to take questions.
I do have a question, I have two of them, actually.
Sure.
You said, besides the, above the auditorium, that would not be ballasted because of the pitch of the roof?
Because of the pitch.
So, what would that be, what's that install about?
So, a, you know, it'd have to physically attach to the roof, so basically what it is, it's, it's a drill and a rubber boot for kind of latements, which is, you know, inserted into, into, you know, an anchor point, and then that rubber boot is sealed around the racking system, and the racking supports the solar on top of that.
Yeah, so approximately penetrations are going to be depending on, on the system, I'm assuming every six feet or so, or something, I'm assuming like that.
Down, in, into the building?
Into, into the building, how many penetrations would you anticipate? And it could be a rough number, I'm just not sure if this is something that you're mounting and maybe just penetrating for the source, or if your penetration is for structure?
So, we'd probably go about 18 inches down in that number of penetrations for that particular section, about 25?
25. And how, how is that going to work with our warranty on the roof?
Sure, and this, this would apply for ballasted and for roof penetrations as well, so...
Same idea, whether it's penetrating roof or not, you're saying?
Well, I just mean the, the process for making sure that the warranties remains in place, so Greenskies would have to coordinate with your installer and the manufacturer of the material that you use on the roof, do a pre and post inspection. Basically, anything that happens on that roof solar-related, the installer and the manufacturer have to sign off before it happens, and then after it happens. And it's up to Greenskies to ensure that the work that they do adheres to the standards of the installer and the manufacturer of the equipment, otherwise, they won't sign off on it. So, it's, it's a pretty strict process, pre and post-install, that involves all parties that are, you know, important to the deal.
Well, it's kind of a different situation here yet, because we don't quite own the roof yet.
But you will eventually, right, I mean, it's...
Right, so I don't, I don't know if that's going to be any type of issue.
Well, do you anticipate that happening by the summer?
No, I don't, the warranty period, I believe, would be after that.
Okay.
And it might be broken up into sections, I'm not 100% sure, but...
Sure.
I was at a meeting today, we went over some of those details, so I don't know if that would be an issue or not.
Well, I'd want to talk to, want to talk to the installer and try to get a better sense of the timeline of things, generally.
Okay.
It's, it's not a hard no, it's just, it takes a little bit more paperwork and a little bit more coordinating, if you don't have, you know, it's like your certificate of occupancy yet.
Another thing I want to ask you is, we do have a power purchase agreement with, we are writing on the coattails of the City of Torrenton, not coattails, together, we're writing a particular agreement that was signed a couple of years ago. Any conflict with those agreements?
No, and the reason I can speak to that is because the Titans, with CCM on the other side of our business, that's exactly what we do, I don't believe the City of Torrenton uses CCM for its electricity procurement.
Yeah, I forget who it is, I was trying to look it up, and I wanted to give you the name, and I, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's us or not, but, you know, we... Yeah, so I'd be happy to take a look at the agreement itself, but in the 15 or so years that I've been doing this, and we're on that side, the commodity brokerage side of the business too, have never had a supplier flag a project or, you know, impose any penalties on anybody for installing solar. And I'd imagine, if your agreement was signed a few years ago, you're probably near the tail end of it at this point, or relatively close.
Yeah, it was either a three or five year, I, I don't remember.
I can help you look through the details, but that's something very common, I mean, we've installed solar on districts that basically included every building, and it hasn't been a problem, so shouldn't be an obstacle for this.
Okay.
Sure. Oh, yeah. Yep, there's a live dashboard, super easy to access, anybody with an internet connection can do it, a lot of times, people put, you know, if you have like a screen in the lobby or something like that, you know, you can beam the, basically down to the inverter level, all the data's getting collected, and it puts it up in a really easy to understand way, you can configure like, you know, how many dollars you saved, how many trees you saved, you know, things like that, which sometimes people find interesting.
Jeff, did you have another question?
No, I'm good, he actually answered all of them.
I paid attention last time.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Good, and just so I can kind of, you know, help you guys and communicate kind of what next steps might be, do you know, can you tell me a bit about like what the process from here might be like, approving the project, or any other committees and things that may need to hear a presentation, I'm obviously happy to give it, I just...
Well, the process would start at this committee first, if we decide to move it on to the full board, then the full board will make the final decision.
Okay.
And there may be one more presentation required at the full board meeting.
Okay, good to know, cool. Everybody good with me?
Everybody good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, since I arrived late, I'm assuming that was item number one under Facilities? Oh, TMS roof, did we do the TMS roof update, all right, I'll catch up with you later on that one. Project updates.
Okay, I do have some printed off, just pass those down, an updated list here.
Hold on, Ellen has a question, hold on.
Go ahead.
Are you going to bring a solar update to the full board or not yet?
Well, I think we need to decide as a committee first, are we going to go move forward with it, correct? I think, nobody really received this packet information prior to tonight, so I think we need some time to digest it, and would you guys agree, or you concur with that, or does anybody feel differently?
This, this, sorry, this, this packet's not hugely different than the last one, besides the updated numbers. Superintendent Wilson and I were looking at it, sitting next to each other in that last meeting, and I think the, the big concern, and correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Wilson, the, the cost, we were trying to get the bigger project in for similar cost.
That's correct, and that's what he was told to do, and he came back and obviously did his homework and was able to, to put that together for us with the numbers. And that's what he was told to do. And he came back and obviously did his homework and was able to, to put that together for us with the numbers.
So I mean, Glenn, it's, you're obviously, you're committee here, but I, I don't have a problem discussing it now because there's not a significant change in the paperwork, just the summary page is a bit different and gave us more advantageous savings, especially with the demand, avoided demand charge.
Are those numbers based upon design one or design two? I'm, because I'm concerned about design two in the roof without having a question on that roof, answer on that roof. We don't even own it yet. He's making one penetration or top five penetrations in a roof. If we've ordered warranty, that's, could be a big problem. That's just.
Yeah, they'll have to work with them. And this is, this is done frequently. They'll have to work with the roof manufacturer as he was going through. There's a process for this. The, the larger system is the one with the units on top of the auditorium and the ones that stretch along the backside of the building. And that's that larger layout for design two. Obviously, we could discuss whether we stay with design one or two, although we somewhat believe design two gave us the most amount of benefit, especially with the design, with the demand charge offset. The larger the system, the greater peak out, but we can get and offset some more demand, which you saw was about a half million dollar difference over the period of time. I mean, it's not millions of dollars, but it is a pretty sizable amount of money.
Okay. So do you guys want to make a motion to move it to the full board then? Is, if, if everybody's comfortable with it?
I'd make a motion to the full board with, obviously with Dean's team working with the, the vendor to ensure there's no warranty issues or we have that due diligence to do, of course, during the process of the contract, but.
Say, say that again, Jeffrey?
I would make a motion to move this to the full board pending Dean's team being agreeable along in the, in the building, well, building committee or whoever needs to be involved in the roof warranty. As long as that all checks out with our attorneys, I would move it to the full board for approval.
Good. May I? I think Jeff, your point is well taken, and I would agree that at this stage with this presentation, we are at that juncture with this subcommittee to recommend to the full board. The only thing I would encourage this subcommittee to do is to, Dean and I to not only make sure that this gentleman works with the roof company, but also we, we actually do need to contact the city because the building do, does come under the city. So before, even if the board were to be in favor of solar, which I'm not saying anyone is or isn't, I, I think we would have to just dot that I and cross that T rather than waste anyone's time with the next presentation at the full board. So my recommendation would be if this subcommittee wanted to push it through the full board, I would say with the understanding that Dean and I have a conversation, not only with the solar company that just presented this evening, but also with the city to make sure that's something that they would be agreeable to. That would be my recommendation for this subcommittee.
Then I would, I would rather wait till we cross a couple of Ts and dot a few Is then, because I would hate to go back with quite, go to the full board and still, we still have, well, a couple of ifs and buts.
I think, I think what he was suggesting Glenn was that we approve it, but not move it to this month's full board. I mean, I think the timing rises, is that correct Superintendent Wilson is approve it so they can start down the path with our support, but we wouldn't bring it to the full board until every I was dotted, T was crossed and, you know, dollar was accounted for.
So then what's the harm in us moving it forward in the next board and see if we have answers next meeting?
Not if they don't find continuing to, to work it out.
I, I just don't know if there's a timeframe and, and if there is, we're fine exactly when we have to get this in. He did mention January 1st might be a deadline for this plan through the, through the, through to get the funding. I think it's changing after January 1st. So.
It is. They, they need to have a signed PPA agreement in place for January 1st so that the vendor can start to put a, they call it a material amount of money towards the project so that they can say it's an engaged project. And then the state or federal funding would be engaged automatically. They have to put a deposit down, put some orders in so that it's a serious project. It's not just a placeholder. But that is January 1st.
So, so then what happens if something happens dated, they don't get things approved with the roof, with the manufacturer, the installer of the roof? We sign a contract and then they're like, oh, well, we got a problem as far as your warranty. If we already have a signed contract, then, then what do we do?
There's outs, there's, there's outs in the agreement for design issues and such. There's, and you'd have those answers before then, I believe. I don't think, Dean, I would assume that over the course of, you know, there a month and a half, we could probably get those answers. Would you concur or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, you're, you're talking about answers as far as the roof warranty?
Right. Yeah. The thing is that Mr. Berger is concerned about, and I agree with him. I mean, it just.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I mean, he's working on it. For us to talk to the city, I don't think is that big of a timeframe.
Yeah. So why don't we, I don't see the harm in waiting to move this at our next facilities meeting to move it to the full board if your intent is not to bring it to the full board this month. Is that correct? Am I misunderstanding something? Please feel free.
We, we can certainly do that. We'll just see if, if he's going to come back out for another presentation, he probably won't take any action if we're not taking action, but I'm fine with whatever. I don't see a problem with move to approve it and let the administration start heading down that road. But if they don't need us to approve it to do that, I guess there's no harm either way.
Right? You don't need full board approval to get answers.
Yeah.
I might, I feel like I'm missing something here. I got a lot of.
I think, I, I think what Jeff's trying to say is if this subcommittee is in agreement, it's, it, it doesn't become a futile exercise for Dean and myself to have those next level conversations of dotting Is and crossing Ts. And it just speeds that process up. Not that it's going to the full board next Wednesday by any means. It would have to wait, but it would be, give us a chance to get the answers needed.
Okay.
And as long as we have this subcommittee's approval to, to move forward and do that.
So do we amend the motion just to move their, give them approval to move forward and not, your motion is not move it to the full board?
Yeah, we can. I, I will amend my motion to that the building, that the facilities committee approves the further investigation of the solar with the intent of bringing it to the full board in December, if all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. We'll pass that motion. As amended by Jeffrey. Okay. Any other questions on the roof? I mean, the solar. It's been a long day, Dean. No?
No.
All right. So then we'll continue on with the projects update.
There we go again. Just like, you know, it's a long list here. Just, I want to go over a couple of things that are, you know, we're moving forward on in progress. We got bottle fillers going in in both TIS, Fast Academy and also Vogel School. The gym pad project up at TIS is 99% complete. We just got a little bit of some fine tuning that we're waiting for the vendor to get us back some, some other items. The intrusion alarm issue that we had and we had, we had, you know, change our buildings out. We are, again, the last school to be done right now is the intermediate school. We had the three other schools completed. So we're in good shape on that. We're up and running on their system now. TTA room over at Fast Academy is going pretty good. We're, we're in the middle of, of putting a kitchen cabinets in and stuff like that. So we can hopefully get, get everybody moved in there shortly. The other thing we're doing big is, you know, we're, we're still clearing out Midgeon Avenue. We've been working a lot on that. And we're, every day a little bit more is getting removed. So we're in good shape there. And I guess the other thing would be, which is kind of next on the agenda, I think it is, is the, you know, signage over at, over at Fast Academy. Take a look at that. I think that's next on the agenda. Am I right? So there's a project update. Anybody have any questions on, on that?
Okay. Hearing none. Thank you. I think we'll move on to the next item then.
Okay. Next item would be, would be the signage for Fast Academy. I sent it in a package. I don't know if we have it up on the board here. Right Way Sign gave us two, gave us two options. And I'm looking for somebody, you guys to tell us which option you want to go with.
And did we just miss this packet? Did it not come out in the email or? It's the email. I got, I got two agendas. I didn't get a packet. Was it?
Can you put it? Oh, it's up on the screen also, Glenn, if you want to look. So the first, uh, option one is pretty much the same type of letters that are on the score right now that say Forbes. And we change it and it would look like Fast Academy. That's the, the silver looking ones. And the second option is more of what we kind of look at, at our intermediate school, the signs that we did up there. This is very similar with the red T and the black letters. Yep. And the price, the prices are on there. Install for both of those are the same install price. And as you can see, the prices, I can't see them up close, but they're up there as far as what, what, what it cost. Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? Jeffrey, go ahead.
Dean, is this just going to go straight onto the brick or is this going to have some kind of a back? I mean, the red on the red is probably difficult to read. Well, it may be difficult to read and I'm not going to lie, the silver reminds me of the almost impossible to read signs that are on the building you're sitting in now.
Yeah. I know. There's no backing behind it. It's pretty much just going right into the block. So you're saying like a contrasting backing or something like that? Supports needed. There's no other supports other than, you know, how they fasten the old letters. They will be fastened to new letters in a very similar standard, which doesn't need any, any backing or support that you would see.
Not, not having seen the sign recently, when it said Forbes, how, how easy was it to see the Forbes sign? I'm assuming it's similar size. It says 42 inch tall letters. Is that?
Yeah, I believe so.
It's hard to tell the scale, even though it's a solar banner. Ironically, there's a solar panel above it in the photo.
Yeah.
Well, TMS, correct? And we do the same one at the.
Very similar TMS, TIS.
Yeah.
TIS is very similar with the black.
Do we do the black?
Yep.
I don't remember what it looked. I don't know if I've seen it installed.
Is that on the building, Dean, or just the signs out front?
Oh, that's the signs out front. So on the building, it's not. Good point, Jeff. On the building, it's not black. It's, it's silver on the building. The signs.
Yeah, I've seen the signs by the road. I'm talking about the one on the building.
On the building is, it's not colored. It's not, it doesn't have, it's not black.
It's black. It's not black.
It's not black.
Why don't we stay the same as, it, does it look good?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, I think it's a bigger area where it says Torrent Intermediate School. There's a lot more letters. I don't know. Something, there's something about it where it, it looks, it looks pretty good. Where if you look at those pictures on there, I don't know, I kind of agree with, again, it, it kind of blends a little bit. The silver, he really doesn't pop like the, like the red and black, but.
Go ahead, Ellen.
The font is different.
The font is different between what?
Between these two?
Yeah.
So it would be the same font as the silver, but it would be in black?
No. I don't, I don't know.
So what's the font we have on the other schools? It's what the silver is?
I don't know. I don't, I, I forget what the font was that we did at the intermediate school.
I'm just thinking for consistency, they should all be the same font.
So I believe the font and the colored one is the same. That's on our signs, not on the building. The, the ones on our building were the same that were on the intermediate school and they would be the same ones that are on Forbes School right now. But if you go with the colored ones, you're going to change the font to what we have on the two signs that are on the property.
So the signs on Southwest School and Vogel are the, the font that's the silver?
I don't know. They're block letters like that. It's not colored letters, if that's what you're asking.
I'm not asking for color. I'm asking the shape.
I don't know. Can we pull it up? I don't know. Yeah, they're very, very similar. I don't know if they're exactly the same.
And the silver, this font that's the silver, you can't get in black. You can only get in silver.
Didn't ask. Didn't ask.
I would be pretty certain that Jeremy could do it in whatever color that, that we wanted him to do it in, but.
I'm just thinking they should all be the same font, but that's my opinion.
I would concur with, with Ellen on the fonts. If we're going to do them on all the buildings and this, the land based signs have been different, you know, and they do look different than what's on the building. I would agree with matching the general look and feel of what's on the buildings.
Okay.
Which would be the silver?
We're trying to be consistent about everything else, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, Glenn.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the option one, the silver lettering? So long as the font matches the existing building at TIS?
All the buildings.
Well, this is only for Fast Academy, correct?
And so that it matches the, the font of all the buildings.
Well, I think we only did signs on buildings at TIS. We haven't done all the other schools.
But the other schools already have signs on them.
But if we're transitioning to a new design, that they're old. Right? If we're going with new, the new stuff going on buildings would match what's on TIS right now. Correct?
Which, which we would assume Glenn matches the new school, right?
So we have block letters on the new school. We have block letters at TIS. When I say, and I'm saying block, B L L C K, that are, that are not a color. So we will be consistent that way. The exact font. Again, I'm not a designer on that. I don't know how many different fonts are, but to say we're going to have the exact font as TIS, I wouldn't say that unless I confirmed it. That is the exact font.
I think we should stay with the same font.
Very, very similar. Yeah. If you look here at Torrent, for it also, we brought up, they're very similar in looking than, than that, but.
Similar than the silver.
Similar to the silver.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll go with that.
You'll go with that? So is that a? It's a motion?
Second.
Second? All right. So we have for option one, silver letters. Same font as TIS. No. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Motion passes. Good luck, Dean. Don't mess up the font.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Dean's a big font guy. Obviously. Rachel can help him with the font, right?
Okay. Um, next on, can I move forward, Glenn?
Yes, sure.
Okay, sorry. Uh, next on the agenda is Siemens. Um, I have Brett Cantley, um, I believe on the line, uh, who's going to give us a presentation. Uh, just to tee it up a little bit. So Siemens is our BMS system company up at the intermediate school that handles all of our HVAC, temperature control. We are in the midst of that, the tail end of a retro commissioning project, which is giving us quite a bit of savings, proposed savings. What we have in front of us tonight is an addendum to that. And also their yearly contract of preventive maintenance is also in here looking for your approval on that. Okay. Is he on?
Hey, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Nice job. Okay. You want to go over probably, I would, I would say Brett, the, the retro commission change that we have there?
Yeah. Do you have physical copies of that, Dean, for everybody? Unfortunately, I am on the move. I'm not in front of my laptop.
We do have digital copies and they're in the packet. So yes.
Perfect. Um, so, so basically alluding to what Dean kind of teed up for me, it's a small change to the project to include two additional measures for the chilled water plant. Chiller supply temperature reset and condenser water reset. They're both common. Um, chiller, uh, supply temperature reset and, uh, condenser water, uh, reset. They're both common uh, reset strategies, programming strategies on how we run a, a modern chilled water plant to save energy and, uh, you know, reduce the tax on the equipment, hopefully keep that equipment happier. Um, so basically the proposal is to add programming to the central plant, um, controllers to implement those two measures. Uh, to commission and test it and then to, um, provide trending and the data logging required for EverSource to, uh, approve the two measures. Um, what I got back from EverSource is that it adds, uh, point two years to the project ROI. Um, so it does, you know, it's a, it's a short extension of the payback, uh, but what it does do is help, you know, run that chiller a little bit more optimally. Uh, so accounting for, you know, anything past the ROI of the total project, you guys would be saving, uh, energy and, um, it keeps the chiller and the cooling towers a little happier, uh, runs them a little bit more optimally. So hopefully it's, uh, less wear and tear uh, on the equipment over the lifecycle, uh, of that plant. Yes, that's my summary. Does anyone have any, um, questions about the proposed change?
I, I do have one question. Um, I, I know when we first started this project, you did not have, uh, we had to wait, uh, to get readings from the chiller. Is this the result of getting the final readings on the chiller?
Yeah, in a way, we were able to get the chiller plant under control. Uh, we looked at the readings coming off the chiller uh, before we had control of it. And then these two measures after we had control of the chiller were suggested to us uh, to include by Resource Innovations, the technical advisor, uh, to EverSource or with EverSource for this project. So this is a result of, um, you know, those readings and then kind of a best practice, uh, industry best practice to include in these, you know, two programming schemes, basically, uh, as a part of the project. To kind of cap it all off.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just talking about the.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty much the, um, the project proposal, uh, nine, five, one, zero, six, seven, three. Um, ECM eight, temperature reset.
I have one question if I could.
Go ahead Jeff.
Is this just software modules being added Brent, or is this actually adding sensors? I'm guessing we're relying on the systems already existing outdoor temperature sensors to make the adjustments?
Uh, it's adding one humidity sensor, um, and then it's using the newly installed, uh, sensors on the central plant, um, to be able to operate it. And it is additional lines of code, uh, that we typically do not include on a base, um, you know, chiller installation, but it is, you know, ASHRAE, section 90, you know, high performance, um, uh, central plant optimization code that, that we would add. So it's a little bit of programming time. It's a, I think, one or two additional sensors, um, and then obviously testing and the measurement verification.
Okay, thank you.
So I just had, I don't see any service rates, um, labor rates in here. Am I missing it somewhere or?
I, I don't think we.
You have 24/7 response, but if you have to come after hours, what are our labor rates?
Are, are you, are you into the contract or are you into this change?
I'm into the contract.
Oh, yeah.
I, I can include those for you guys. Um, that's something we usually have to manually add to our service, uh, contract proposal, but I can definitely get you a copy. I know they just changed October 1 and I think I have a fresh copy for this year, uh, handy. I'll send it to Dean as soon as I get a second, uh, this evening.
Is there any state contract or anything we can go by?
Um, yes, we use, you know, Sourcewell, we use GSA rates. Um, I, I'd have to look at, um, how our on-contract rates compare to the state contract rate, but usually our on-contract labor and material. Um, it's, and it's how we estimate our, our service contracts for time, obviously, um, are better than a lot of the open procurement, um, methods. Uh, but I, I can double check that for you. I think the way we put it together, it was pretty competitive. Um, but I would have to, I'd have to look.
Would, would anybody else like to see labor rates before we commit to anything or?
Yeah, I, I would Glenn. I mean, it's 40% off labor and 60% off material, but you don't know it's 40% off of what?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Did I jump the gun? Did I jump ahead on you? A little bit? I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. I mean, that's alright. I, I, well, I was, I was kind of looking to see if, if, uh, I don't know how you want to handle it. If we're going to vote on this change order and then talk about the contract, but however you want to do it.
How would you like to do it Dean?
Just keep them separate, you know? Yeah, I would say that would, would be, uh, get that out of the way.
And what's the value?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen a year? Or no?
Six, I got all the, I think it's sixteen for the change order for the, um, additional lines of code and the outdoor sensors.
Yeah, okay. So you need a motion to approve that?
The Senate has a vote. Recommend and approve.
Okay.
Because the subcommittee can't make.
Alright. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend moving the change order for the sensors for the chilling towers to the full board for approval.
Any, any questions? All in favor? Alright, any vote? Alright, move that to the full board, Marissa, please. And then where are we going from there Dean? The contract that I jumped ahead on?
Yeah, again, the contract is the second thing I brought to the table today. So if we need more information on that, um, to see what the hourly rates are, I think that's where we just ended up. Brett, I just want to clarify also, including in this is the upgrade for our, um, uh, the software, correct?
Yes, yeah. So it's, uh, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but it's a quarterly preventative maintenance visits where we do a variety of, um, BMS related service tasks. It's, uh, automated backups of the system, you know, in case of catastrophic, either our hardware or your server hardware, uh, failure, we can get you back up and running right away. Uh, it's guaranteed response times, it's discounted labor and material rates. Uh, and then it's most importantly, um, I think as a part of this one, upgrades, uh, to the software for major, um, faulty life revisions as well as security patches. Uh, you know, we want to be making sure that, that software is up to date, um, with everything that comes out.
Okay, and, and I guess, uh, I guess until we have those labor rates, we really can't do anything with it unless, yeah, it's something you can't submit tonight, but, um, so I guess we'll.
I have a fast question if I could, Mr. Berger.
Sure thing.
Brett, it talks about, uh, the monitoring of the system. At what point do you guys, you're actively monitoring, if we're seeing some components that are running outside of their normal parameters, are you reaching out to, to Dean and his team? How, how does that work with this type of a support contract? It does mention monitoring, but it's a little bit, I don't want to say vague, but it's not quite clear as to whose responsibility and how often you would intervene.
Yes, so as a part of the contract, uh, in front of you guys, it's just when we're onsite, uh, we're taking a look at the system, you know, characteristics and anything that jumps out of us. It's like having kind of an expert operator onsite for a day. Uh, there are things that we can do and I've talked, you know, briefly with Dean, um, about, uh, either, you know, snapshot reporting to provide, you know, a, a global list of, um, you know, maybe conflicts that the system identifies where, uh, it can pick up on possible failed parts or, uh, set point deviations where a teacher would notice that it's, you know, increasingly warm in a classroom. Uh, that is the cap, we, we do have that capability. Um, it's just not a part of the contract as proposed. Uh, I'm more than happy to put together something that's a little bit more, um, you know, intensive in that way where we're doing either, you know, occasional snapshot monitoring or, uh, you know, there's something called fault detection and diagnostics, which is a 24/7, 365, uh, you know, space analytics monitoring of the system. Um, but it, it's not something that we had, you know, prepared for, for this meeting.
Uh, understood. My, I guess I would defer to Dean on this to some extent. We always have a hard time getting capital. We have to push our equipment to run an extremely long time, well past its service life in many cases. If you're telling me that this monitoring or to Dean can tell Dean, this monitoring may be able to detect issues that would help extend the life of the equipment because you're catching things before they're a much larger problem, I would be in favor of, if the board would feel it, uh, just to hear the pricing of that. But Dean, you, you work with this. Do we have this type of service in the other buildings?
Uh, nah, I don't think, oh, this building we will, obviously, but some of the other buildings, the system aren't as, um, as advanced as this upgrade that we just did for this. So actually, um, yeah, I mean, I, again, I don't think TIS is at this level either. When I say that, I mean, it's complex because it is brand new. Um, but this middle school system with, with the upgrades that we just did, I think we have a, a much better handle on the systems than we do some of the other buildings. If that answers your question Jeff.
Yeah, just do you think there'd be any value in Brett coming back to you with a number to have a, a remote watchful eye on the system? So they're, they're looking for those issues and presenting them to you probably before we would know about them, right?
Yeah, you know, I mean, we just, they, they were, they were just out doing some other stuff and they identified a, uh, uh, air handle in you that wasn't working today. So I'm able to get the guys out tomorrow to do it. So I, there's always value in preventative maintenance. Yes.
So, I, I don't know what the rest of the board feels. I'd be in favor of Brett giving us maybe a, a more advanced plan for, that gave us some additional features for us to consider since he's going to be back with, uh, labor rates and such anyways.
Okay.
You, you, you want him to put together a plan with the more advanced stuff along with the labor rates? Is that what you're asking him to do?
That's what I'm asking, but the committee has to agree.
I would agree to that. I don't think we need a motion for that, correct? No.
No.
This, he can hear us, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to do it. I was just waiting for my, my second to chime in. Yeah, that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Alright, so are we moving forward on that?
Ellen, you want to ask a question? That, that's, it's. Okay. So no other questions then? Are we done with Siemens?
I'm good. Good, thank you.
You're good?
I'm good.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. And then I'll be in touch with, uh, with Dean.
No?
Alright Brett, thank you. And I will look forward to that, uh, proposal and, um, I'll get it out to everybody as soon as we get it in.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Thank you. Yep.
You ready, Ms. Vines?
Yeah, sure.
Alright.
You're ready for me?
I think so.
Alright, so quickly our social media update. Uh, gold star this month goes to our Torrington Public Schools page. Um, and it was actually the post honoring all of the students who received recognition, uh, last board meeting. So a little bit of a double recognition for them. Um, so congratulations to them again. Um, and then some of the other pictures, there's a lot of fun Halloween ones. I think Spookly the Pumpkin was in there, lots of Lorax's. Um, so lots of fun pictures this month. Um, and I would anticipate that next month we'll see, um, some of our Veterans Day photos from all of the celebrations that we had the other day. Any questions on that?
I don't have any. Does anybody else have any questions? Jeff, no questions?
No questions here. I've used my allotment for the night.
That was, that was, you still have more for Rachel. You get an extra three.
Oh, so generous. Um, if you're all set up with that, I'll move on to the tech updates. Um, so we had our, um, professional development day recently, um, that the technology or the IT team supported. Um, it went really, really well. Um, we held it in this building here for the whole district. Um, so it was nice to be able to utilize a lot of the technology that we have here, um, including the auditorium and our cafeteria spaces as well as the classrooms. Um, so it went very well. Um, and then, um, as I mentioned before, there were several Veterans Day assemblies throughout the district. Um, and particularly here, we held the Veterans Day assembly in the brand new auditorium, um, and Joshua livestreamed it. So, um, all of that went very well. And that's really all I have for this month. Um, still collecting data that we spoke about the, um, phishing, um, training for the staff. I believe we agreed to circle back on that in January. Um, but it has officially launched. You may see it in your email. Um, so just be on the eye and have your eyes out for any suspicious emails and please do not click.
Okay.
And, and make sure you all click through the training links and make Rachel happy.
Yes, please, please, please. It, they're, they're very short. Um, and, yeah, you know, it, it only takes a few minutes of your time to just go through a little video, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Topics for future meetings. Um, I think we'll keep the same format, less the Fast Academy signage. Does that sound correct? Or no, take off the TMS roof. I guess, I, I'm sorry I was late, but I missed that part. Is there anything other further discussion that's needed for next month on that?
Yeah.
So we'll keep the same outline, less Fast Academy, Academy signage, correct? Anybody have anything they'd like to add?
Did we vote on and approve the change order? Or are we going to wait? Not, not the contract change order? Did I miss that?
We did. We, we voted to move it to the full board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just checking.
Alright. Nobody has anything they want to add? So we'll move on to comments for the goodie to order. Ellen? Patrick? Uh, yeah, okay. Mr. Wilson? Go right down the line. Armin? Yeah, good. Donna? Rachel?
Good meeting and thank you Ellen.
Mercedes? No? Alright. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Alright. Wahoo? Wahoo.
Want me to start again? We'll start again. Call to order at 6:46. Roll call, we're all here. Approval of the agenda. Glenn and Pat unanimous approval of the minutes. Pat and Glenn, all in favor? Any public participation? None. Okay, discussion and next steps. Monthly financials. Donna.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So everybody received the packet with the monthly financials up to October 31st, 2025. And before I just jump into a few things that stuck out, I was going to answer some of the questions that came up at the previous meeting. So we had a question about our sewer fee and they wanted to know if it was paid twice or once, and it is paid just once and we did pay it out. So we had the opportunity to pay it twice, but we just paid it in one lump sum. The other two questions were, we wanted to know what the electricity was for the high school for the monthly fee. It was $34,000 in September. And then for TMS, it was $24,000 in September. And I did do a look back for TMS and it was $40,000 for August. So it is, you know, trending down, so that's a good good sign. So those were the questions that were asked previously. And now I'm going to just jump into a few highlights of the budget that had a few things that either were under or over. So if you go to your packet and you go to page eight, you're going to go to line 111.5 and all the way to 50.58. So those are the stipends and you're going to notice that 0% has been used, but that's because we just paid out the first amount of stipends and we're in the fall. And then we're going to pay out the second amount in the spring. On the same page, 5112.03, you're going to see the Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, the Coda. It looks like it's trending over and there was one staff that was assigned to that line item that needed to go to another line item that was budgeted for. So we fixed that. On page nine of 5112.9, you'll see longevity and it looks like nothing's being paid out and that will be paid in June. For page nine, 5120.02, you're going to see the substitute clerical line item look like it's a little it's going over, which it is, and there's been several vacancies for the clerical that we've had substitutes cover. Also for vacation time, there's been coverage there. So I'm keeping an eye on that. On page nine again, 5130.3, you're going to see OT for clerical trending slightly over. I did look to see the previous month, it was, you know, in about 2000s and now it's three. So we're going to keep a close eye on that, maybe potentially have a freeze on overtime or to get, you know, permission for special occasions. I did look at last year's amount for that and we did spend $23,000. So we might have under budgeted it a little for that for this year. On page 10, line item 5290, you're going to see severance. And that's 0% right now spent. So again, that'll be paid in June. And then on page 10 again, 5340.04, our favorite line item miscellaneous professional services is slightly over, but the other professional services is slightly under, so it's going to balance out. On page 11, 5430.2, you're going to see landscaping that's over about $45,000. All bills have been paid, all special projects have been paid. So that is the balance for that line item. And we've been looking into the budget closely to see where there's some money in other areas. And it looks like in oil, we might have that amount to be able to cover it because we're not using as much. And then finally, page 13 is 5650 instructional tech supply. And we're just kind of kind of look at that right now and that's for teachers, devices. So we're going to be probably spending a little bit of that coming up. And those were the major items that kind of stuck out. The budget's in good shape, about 33. And we're about 33% through the budget. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick one to be brief. The landscape, you think that was a contracted amount, correct? That we budgeted for?
There was a contracted amount, but there was work done outside of the contracted amount that was in the scope. So that those are some other items.
Did that have to do with the new school? Outside the scope?
I believe we had to do some line painting in parking lots and a few other things that might not have been anticipated. But we're in good shape because the other line items look like they're going to be coming in with a surplus for oil.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff.
Donna, you went three for five this week. This is awesome. You knocked off you knocked off a bunch of my questions. I just, and actually almost four, because 5624 is the oil. I noticed that that we were using considerably less. Is that because we've converted somewhere or are we just are we just trending less already? We're not really into the heating season, but does anybody know?
Yeah, so I'm going to let Dean field that question. He'll have more specific information.
So, yeah, we're not we're not really burning oil. We haven't for the last year or so. I will. What normally has happened is we burn natural gas up into a certain temperature and then we switch over to oil because the BTUs per hour just works out a little bit more in favor to burn oil. So we haven't had a big oil purchase in a while, but I am going to switch some of these over just to use some of this oil up at sitting and get it moved through the schools. So I don't imagine it's going to be that much that we're going to use, but I do want to get that portion of the heating system fired up on oil, switch it switch it back over. The other thing is, the only thing that is fully oil right now is Midgeon Avenue. And, you know, I got that at 50 degrees right now, just just because we still have people in there, you know, sorting through boxes and things of that nature. I don't think I'd go much below that anyway, in fear of freezing if there is a draft in that building. And there's a lot of drafts in that building, so that's that. That's where we are with fuel oil.
Thank you, Dean. And then my last one, Donna, is 5112.04. And I should have written down the page number. It's the paraprofessional security. I remember that I asked this question, it was earlier in the year, and we were taking that item out and reclassing it somewhere else as an adjustment to the budget, but there was still a transaction at this month. I wasn't sure if it's it's 5112.04. It's the line just below that occupational Dakota. It gets back on like page.
Okay, gotcha.
Professional security?
Yep. Yes, let me just look. Paraprofessional security 104. I will look into that one. I do see the transaction that you're speaking of, but I believe that got transferred into a grant. So we could reclass that additional fee that's in that line. Because we have a cut.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Donna.
Anyone else? Okay, moving right along. Student activity and PTO accounts.
Okay, so everybody received a copy of the accounts that we have for each of the school's student activity. And the PTOs, we figured we put in there as well. This is just a baseline budget and we'll be doing reconciliations throughout the month. We'll also be meeting with each of the schools to go over their student activity plans per the board's policy. So we'll have more information to get back to on that. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Like I said, it's just sort of a baseline. We've had a lot of transition and people that are overseeing these accounts with the PTO and the student activity. So our accountant has been working with them hand in hand to make sure they have access to the right accounts and to know the procedures and policies for requesting cash. That's basically where we're at right now.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Budget 2627 timeline.
Okay, we just all caught our breath and now we're going to hit the ground running, planning next year's budget. So I had initially had a schedule in the packet, but we did make some updates, hence the draft at the top. Very slight updates to the one that you received. We did hand out the updated one here and we could put it in the minutes of the packet. And and it has been, so that's great. So we wanted to just go over it very briefly of where we're going to start. December 12th is pretty much the starting line where we're going to have the sites all, you know, deliver their budgets to the cabinet members at central office of the executive leadership team. And we'll be going over those budgets from the 15th to the 19th. And then in January, on the 14th, there'll be a regular board committee meeting where a budget meeting, sorry, where we're going to go over the five-year capital budget and the capital tech budget as well. And then in January 29th, we're going to submit it to the city, the capital budget and the capital tech budget. January 30th, we're going to email the superintendent's recommended budget to the Board of Ed members individually. to the Board of Ed members individually for their review and questions. Then moving into February 11th, we're going to present the superintendent's budget to the Board of Ed. March 11th, at the regular budget committee meeting, we're going to review any changes made to the budget from the last meeting. March 16th, we're going to have our public budget workshops where the community can come and listen and ask questions. And we will all be available for that. And then we're going to do, on March 28th, the superintendent's 2627 budget proposal. At the regular Board of Ed meeting, we're going to have the summary and the adoption at that point. And then, of course, April 1st, the BOA's approved budget will be due to the city. And then April through May, those dates haven't been determined yet. But there'll be a joint meeting between the Board of Finance and the Board of Education for our, our presentation. So that's just kind of a high-level look at it. And like I said, there is a big draft at the top of that page because it is a work in progress. But we just wanted to kind of get it out there so we can have any discussion needed and potentially move it to the full board. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? All set. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now the biggie. Update on the audit.
Okay, well, I'm happy to report that we're closing the books on the audit. All is well and ended well. We're going to have a final number. It does look like our 2% for the reserve is intact. I'll have the exact numbers for our next meeting, and we'll be able to pretty much close the chapter on that book. So I don't know if anybody has any questions there.
Anyone? Jeff? You're, we can't hear you.
Will they present any recommend... I don't know if this audit is like the city audit where they present recommendations or anything.
Yeah, we had, you know, no material outcomes from it. So it was, it was pretty much status quo on the Board of Ed side. But they do do a summary, and we will have the report that I'll be able to share with everybody once they finalize it.
And congratulations.
Thank you. I had a great team to help me get through it, trust me.
Any other questions? Okay, this was quick. Topics for future meetings. Monthly financials. You'll update us again on the activity funds?
Yes.
Budget timeline, if there's any change?
Sure.
An update on the audit?
Yes, that'll be good. And then also line item transfers.
I was going to say, yeah.
We'll be ready for those by then.
Okay, great. Okay. Comments for the good of the order. Start with you, Lisa. Bill.
I just want to recognize that this is the last subcommittee meeting. You will be chairing, after years of doing so quite admirably.
Thank you.
And we are going to have trouble keeping our i's dotted and our t's crossed once you're gone, too, we're used to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you. Donna?
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Ellen. I'm going to miss you.
Same here. Thank you. Marissa? Josh? Okay. Motion to adjourn. 702. Glenn and Pat, all done. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.